Always gonna have something else.
It says live.
Yeah, good.
Cool, okay, so we'll get started at six thirty, September third, twenty twenty five. Special session, um, your call meeting order at six thirty and start with invocation of the flag of the. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for bringing us together here. We ask that you work through us to make the right decisions for our city. We ask that you protect, um, our city workers and, and our police officers as they go through the days, uh, performing work and business for, for the city every day. Um, Lord, again, we just ask for your guidance. Help us make the right decisions. We ask you to sing to Jesus' name.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, this is a budget workshop. That's it. Uh, we have any announcements?
Next Thursday is the, uh, September.
I mean, people need to get certain, get in like seven AM for sure at the latest.
That's the latest.
If they're coming, if they're coming to just be there to witness it, but fills up pretty quick. And then do we know what time the firework is gonna be?
Eight oh three.
Eight oh three. Cool. Did they ever tell you what kind of planes you have?
We got a C one thirty and an F sixteen lined up. Still waiting on that final checkmark.
Yeah. We're grateful for what we had last year. This is gonna be.
It is, yeah, yeah. One's coming out of Oklahoma, one's coming from South Texas somewhere.
Think or somewhere.
Yeah. Cool. Any other announcements from the city? Anything going on, anything? Everything good with the trash contract or trash stuff going on?
Yes, we are still looking at locations. I spoke with him today after last meeting and he was going to look at that one and then me and Shannon will try to get in contact with a couple of little locations.
So I talked to Andrew Cone, the guy that owns the Finston area right next to Kings Marine.
Yes.
And he said that he would let us use that. We, he would ask us to pay for some nominal fee like one hundred bucks, which is what it cost him to mow it. So it's available and.
Could you give me his contact information?
I can. Yeah, I talked to him, uh, Saturday or Sunday about a different matter, but we just happened, after we were talking about the polycar, need a place to put the polycars and he's like, I have that place up there. It's nine acres or seven acres. No, it's nine.
Nine acres, very centrally.
Yeah.
I think we can afford four hundred bucks.
Easy for them to get in and out.
Yeah, it's got a lock. They can give us the code to the lock and it's all concrete up front. Said he's got an acre and a half of it mowed. The rest of it needs to, you know, still pretty, you can put a lot of polycars on that acre and a half. That seems like they would be.
I would think.
I would think. Would you ask Black Jacket if they'll pay that fee? Okay.
That would be a good place, very centrally located.
Okay. I will, Mary, I'll, before I leave today, I'll text you and Andrew, connect y'all.
Awesome.
Cool. Nothing else? How, how's the, uh, the work going at the water point?
It's going good. Well, I mean, I say that their quality, yeah, it's going good.
I mean, are they, are they?
Making a lot of progress.
Five percent long, ten percent long?
Oh, I don't know. Uh, they got a long way to go.
They're only working on a tank at the moment.
So they're gone from the top to bottom. They're just now halfway.
What are they doing exactly?
They got a sandblasted and re-coated, repaint it.
Pieces coming out of that.
The pieces from the.
Like other pieces to the project.
From the come out the filter and all that stuff, yeah. Do we have any projection on that? Any announcements from the police department?
No, no. And they said it could take them a special month.
Regular.
Okay. Any suggestions included? I didn't have a sign on, but. No?
Did you have anything you want to speak about?
Any announcements you think, you can think of that you would like to share?
There's not an announcement. I have a question for the, for Gerald Kurt. That'd be an hour later.
For what was it?
For what? The red repair on Kurt.
Uh, yeah, if you could get with maybe get with J D. After the meeting, if you could, because that's not something on the agenda. Um, so I mean, you can ask your question. We just couldn't answer you right now, but he can answer you after. Thank you.
You could give an update during an announcement.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you've got any updates, I, I know that was a, that was an issue that happened what, this past week, right?
Yeah, the, the rain washed it out pretty good and a car drove across it, got stuck.
That was on Kurt lane, right?
Yeah, right at the entrance.
How are we on repairs?
Uh, we went into some yesterday, some today, but the, the material's wet, so it's not doing much good.
Yeah, I mean, it's just gonna water out right now.
But we also need the homeowner to fill in their section. Where we, where we did their tap.
It's in the ditch.
Mm-hmm. Where we did the tap there, it's, it's still open. They'd have filled it in.
You reached out to them.
So that just, I'm not much, that just allowed it to just go wherever it wanted to.
All right. Well, I mean, your water, your water's pulling up there, I guess, in that tap and it's just gonna continue to run underneath the road, which is technically a ditch that, that we cut the road. We filled it back in, you guys, until it's gonna compacts enough that it's not gonna resist the water filtration into it. Okay. Then we'll move back straight to the budget workshop. Plenty of time to, thanks on the back.
Let me start. I almost started off with a problem. Uh, I made a statement last week that there should be about a million and a half dollars available through the, uh, water and sewer. It's not there. There's, um, it shows on the balance sheet, but when we compare the balance sheet to the bank statement, there's over a million dollars difference. It's a, I seem to remember seeing that last year. I walked after the budget thing, I went home thinking, there's a ton of money there. It's, it's an inherited problem. Um, and Mary really discussed, helped me discover the difference. Anyway, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard to make a really good decision with a balance sheet that's got a stack that size.
So you're comparing it to, make sure I'm understanding, you're comparing the budget to what's in the bank, right?
No, no, I'm comparing the balance sheet, which has a line item on it that says bank balance. And the one almost a month ago showed, I wanna say one point eight million dollars in the bank. And when Mary showed me the, the bank statement.
That's all we have now.
It was a little over five hundred thousand. So there's a massive difference between what's on our books and what's on the bank's book.
Right, is that in one specific account?
Yes.
I'm gonna say water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I, before you start trying to look so at orange bank balances, we are going consolidated, so some of these accounts will be fully disappearing. Um, as of October one, the water sewer will be consolidated with the general fund, but Fund View will keep them separated as far as funds themselves. It's just going into one physical bank account. So that five hundred thousand is just what is there. We are operating out of the general fund and there's no more income going into the water sewer account. Now, it's all, it's all separated. Whenever you see your P and L each month, other than it's all separated like it should be there, it's not exactly here. We found, uh, these problems even through QuickBooks. My best guess is one, it is, it's several, several years old, that it could be, it could either be cleaned up by getting a CPA to come look further into it, more than just what we usually have done, or the audits as they're getting caught up, then they will start to clean up those numbers as well. A lot of the numbers that are not making sense are numbers we don't touch. They're not our everyday budget operating numbers. They are the depreciation and our old flow, different, different accounts. I can give you all about it. If you wanna see it, uh, there's just things that we don't touch here at City Hall.
So where are we on the audits?
We are wrapping up twenty one, twenty twos. And then we'll be rolling into twenty two, twenty threes.
Is there not some sort of limit on when the budgets have, when the, when the audits have to be completed? I mean, we're, we're wrapping up twenty one, twenty two. That seems four years old. Um, what? Where does, where does that lie? Where does the responsibility to have that completed in a timely manner lie? Clearly, we go, we give it to someone else to audit. Is it internal or external?
It's external.
Because I know we can do both.
It's external. Um, so from what I've gathered, from what I've been told and wherever, there was a big pause in audits. I wanna say close to five years. Nothing was done.
By who?
I don't know. I was not here, so.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I understand.
City Hall. Uh, wait, I got here in August. Um, it was talked about, let's start working on twenty one, twenty twos. So a whole lot got done until this past year. I've really been pushing to get them done, but because we're so far behind, the auditors don't put us at the front of the list, because they're working on the regular end of years. End of the year, so here in the summer, pretty much the only time they will work on older audits. They would like to say we will get done with twenty one, twenty two, get a good chunk started, um, before end of fiscal year on twenty two, twenty threes, where we can be caught up here in the next couple of years. Hopefully, we can get sooner, but I'm just being realistic with what they've done.
Do we need to look at a second audit company that could be doing too?
We might, but that, but that would be a conversation for a little bit of a different way. I understand audits do have some relation or correlation to the budget, but it's sort of not what we're.
Not what's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's not what we're here to, understand to speak about tonight, but, but it's definitely something that needs to be.
I'm making notes of what needs to be on the agenda.
And y'all can always call, email me. I mean, most of y'all that are in my office, we can talk a little bit more in depth as we need to be on it. Uh.
You said twenty one, twenty twos, what's in progress?
It's, um, they are wrapping up. We're doing our final questionnaires. They're wrapping up the end of EDCs. They are near the end of it.
Cause we have thirty that are missing. Okay.
And I mean, there are new, new laws that can affect September one that puts penalties in place. And that's something I'm really trying to push to get, get these done, so we don't have to hit it with no penalties.
Okay, I did not mean to take away from Ramsey's.
I think it kinda, it kinda goes hand in hand with what Ramsey is saying, uh, because that would clean up some of the numbers that have these discrepancies that we're not, that I don't have definite answer for.
I do.
Yeah, it may not be, it may not be as bad if, if, if liabilities have gone down as much as the assets went down, then we're okay.
So I think unfortunate, it's very unfortunate, but in the time that Chris has been involved and myself with city council, there's been a massive turnover within our city. And we started, we started at that time, we had a city administrator, I'm not, most person I voted on. We had a city administrator, she was very sick. She ended up, she ended up passing away. Um, and then at the time, the, the mayor was handling, handling a lot of that. And then we hired, so, so I mean, to answer your question, it's how we got here. I think how we got here is the massive turnover. But, but probably even more detrimental to, to the turnover was the difference of how people kept records or kept information or, and not to be talking about anybody or the lack thereof.
But I'm just, I'm more concerned, I'm not really looking like blind.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying.
I just wanna know, I just want.
But I think there's no magic wand to ways to figure out how to fix it. Really and truly, what's gonna fix it is what you're almost saying was the audits. That should hopefully shed some light, which the bad thing is it's gonna shed light from twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, so on and so forth. Um, but until then, we gotta get as close as we can. So I, I would, I would, I would say what you're finding is probably more true than what the first thoughts were, as far as we're a million up here. The five hundred thousand makes more sense, but you gotta think about that carries us through. But if you're only talking about, are you only talking about water sewer?
Yes.
Okay. So the five hundred thousand is probably closer to true. Um, and now keep in mind, I know that the thought, the thought is, when we say five hundred thousand, that we, we think about that as city money. It is, but it isn't, because water sewer money is different than general fund money. And, and, and I've heard, I've heard people in the past, and even at this, at this table, at this meeting, not tonight, but in the past, well, if we got that money instead, we got stuff that needs to be done in our city. That is very correct, but that couldn't come out of this budget with the things that we're thinking about could be done in the city. Maybe some of the waterline stuff, but I mean, if you wanna pick a project, let's, let's just say water sewer related, if we were to say earlier, five hundred thousand would touch that. But you're talking probably one and a half million, you're starting to scratch the ground.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're tickling two million, you might have a project.
Right. The difference is one point two, so we're getting there.
Where is the one point two?
The difference, when the, the balance sheet shows one point eight million, the bank shows one point five, one, I mean, not point five. And so there's a, there's a one point two million dollar difference.
Yeah.
Again, on what, on what you have to use to make financial decisions, in what reality.
But just like anything in life, you don't wanna zero yourself out, because you've got, you know, you've got pumps, you've got towers, you've got infrastructure, that if something was to happen.
Sure, but there's a lot, there's a lot more that goes into it than, than just the bank account. There's, there's, there's the, you know, the current assets, things are gonna, I mean, the current liabilities, things are gonna be paid in the next ninety days. There's, you have, you have to balance the, the assets against the liability and. Yeah.
Right.
Plus, there's the revenue coming for the next twelve months. Besides the, besides the bank balance, there's the revenue that's expected over the next twelve months as well, right? So we're not just, this is, this available balance we have is not all of the money that we have. We also have the revenue for the next twelve months, as well as the liabilities for the next twelve months.
Right.
So, um, and then when you look, you know, when you look in the back, you know, on the back page where you have, you know, uh, CD under public water and sewers, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That's money that's in the bank that's in a certificate of deposit. I assume what CD stands for. So, you know, there, there, there's some backup in there already, that that money is sitting there, um, that it should allow us to do some of the things, uh, that are related to water and sewer, not necessarily the air, air, a project the size of Airhead, which we're gonna obviously need grants for, but we ought to be able to do some of the things that we wanna do and get some of the things that we need with the money that we have, both in the account and in expected way.
I agree. I don't disagree. We just gotta make those decisions here on this budget on what we wanna do.
So just to kind of, on this, to see, I know we've talked format, I know it's still a concern. I did add in two extra columns in here to kind of give you guys a delta. I didn't go left to right like we were wanting to, because that's just a major overhaul of manipulating data and we're down to deadlines. So I don't wanna spend more time working on that first. And actually, let's diving into the numbers for what we're looking at. Does that help make any more sense, understanding this? Or is there something else that needs to be done to help kind of clarify anything? I did try to break it up by page as well. So the first page is just revenue. Second page is just water related. Um, the third page is sewer related and then non-departmental. And then at the very bottom, you'll see the columns. But I tried to make it a little easier to follow. I know we're still flipping pages. I tried to make it a little easier to follow.
So page, page two is just revenue?
No, page one is just revenue.
Okay.
Page one is just revenue. Page two is, starts the expenses.
Okay.
So page two is water related expenses. And some of, um, in the water related are some of our general expenses, because last year, we decided to consolidate a lot of our line items. So they went into the water, the O six count, um, and then specific sewer related and non-departmental is last page. But those are all, like, the last two pages are all expenses. And there's definitely some new numbers in there that you're seeing. Um, this time, we're seeing at the last bit workshop, I've updated all the liability insurance. I've, I've made some changes to the carryover based off of some more research that I've done. And then that's why you're seeing these highlighted marks in the twenty four, twenty five actual column. That's where I came up with my number for the carryover. Plus another income number that we have that's not on here, that I know we received that was here, my, for this budget.
So the last two pages were expenses on what you've got here, right?
Uh, uh, yes. You also have this sheet here where y'all are sitting. This is payroll, proposed numbers, where they're at. That'll help explain that number and the salary. Some big changes that I have made, like outside the ordinary of trending, uh, on the third page. Figure out what line item it is. It's, um, twenty eleven fifty three sixty nine. Those USDA phase one and two. Um, I would like to rename that to just USDA loans, so they're all in one, uh, cause there's technically four loans, so they've never been, in the past three or four years, documented properly in there. So if I consolidate them all, that cleans that up, and that is the total amount that we will be paying.
We don't show anything in the twenty five requested, requested?
Um, because it was requested in other areas in here. So you'll see USDA phase one and two over here, and then you'll see wastewater treatment plant construction. They're kind of, they were just thrown in different areas. So I put all of them into one line item, because they're gonna come out twice a year. They come out the same line item as long as it's a generalized number.
So point me to where it is in the, in the proposed.
Last page.
Okay, I see the USDA phase one and two.
Yeah, and it says, uh, in the orange.
I see, I see nothing in the twenty five proposed budget.
Yes, so last page, about midway through the bottom, you'll see a note that says all USDA payments, right beside there.
Twenty eleven fifty three sixty nine.
Two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty five dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
That was one of my only big changes, other than the carryover.
I think, I think we're gonna start somewhere.
I'm just, wherever, it's everybody's uncomfortable.
And it only makes more, more sense to start from.
So with the actual revenues?
Yeah.
Well, we've got checking interest, six thousand. Um, it has finally been documented properly this year. That's why you're seeing a big change from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five. Um, but do you really kind of help clean that up part of it?
Right.
Um.
What equipment are we gonna sell?
I need to read, I'm gonna show those six nask.
I play be you, sir.
I'm hoping a lot. I mean, I'm hoping a few trucks.
We gotta have something a little more definitive than that.
I mean, yeah, where do we get the number from? Just roll over from last year.
I mean, we said a few trucks.
What trucks do you want us up?
I mean, we need to, we need to really be thoughtful in this, because I, I think we're actually able to hit that with auction. We got pretty close with our auction this year.
All but the newer ones, really.
One, two, three, four.
Four.
Four trucks, four trucks at twenty five hundred dollars each?
Are all four of those trucks running?
Yeah.
We might get that. Nothing else? It's just gonna be the trucks? There's no equipment?
Boom mower.
Boom mower, okay.
That's it.
And so they've never been used, and those will be sold by then.
Did we not sell anything this year? Well, that auction was this one, no?
That was last year.
That was last year.
Yeah, we didn't have anything this year.
There's been no revenue this year. Which, I mean, in reality, puts, puts us behind, but. So that's all the equipment that would be sold this year?
Yes.
There's no other equipment that needs to be, act of amount, none of that. I mean, that's, that's kind of something that I was getting to earlier when you were talking about the money. That's, that's another thing that our city has done a fairly poor job at. Um, you know, and, and really, the only, the only area we've done a decent job at that is the police department. That's only been within the last five years. Right. Um, the police department, I guess, did a, a better job even than public works even before that. But I would say in the last five, six years, the police department's done a pretty good job of cycling out, cycling in, because you have to do that no matter what, right? We all do it in our own personal lives. Um, and, and this stuff's getting driven or used every day. And, and I think that's probably where some of this has been created, this deficit that we're looking at going, why is there this much money? Well, I think it's because there's been lack of decision or lack of commitment, um, by, by the city and or state. And when I say city, that means this, this table right here, we, we are the city, we're representatives, representatives of this city. Most everybody lives here or works here, do, do not live here. So obviously, we have to live here, the city and the town. Thank you. Um, so I think that's where we, as a council, we need to try to work with, with, uh, you guys and have a work. We need to come up with a plan, because that's where some of these, some of these dollars are gonna happen, whether anybody likes it or not, or, or it's popular, budget, it doesn't matter. Um, there's gonna, there's, there's a need there, right? In the past, we went to auctions and bought equipment, i.e. the boom mower. Um, and I ran that boom mower personally myself. And it's a dinosaur, it will chew up stuff, but is it, is it fun to run it now? But that's probably not some, that was a good farm equipment for somebody to buy to, to mow their, their pod dam or something. It probably was never gonna hold up to a complete city of west blocking.
Yeah.
For being honest. I think it was traveled inside hours to here.
Yeah.
Locked up one, and somebody drove it off and did.
It ended up.
But anyway, that's the kind of stuff that needs to be thought about in your, in your daily thinking. And that's what you do need to become in the council and say, look, this is what needs to happen, not, not saying, well, we're, we're open to get rid of a few trucks, right? You need to think deeper than that, trying to just push you to think deeper than that. Um, cause I can tell you right now, you have the boom mower, but you've got that little New Island tractor that's, I think that, I mean, that tractor's, yeah, we put some money into it, but that tractor's more smack out. I ran it personally, I mowed with it, I've done funny motor work with it, that tractor was more smack. I ran it personally, I mowed with it, I've done funny motor work with it, that tractor was smack out, okay? So in reality, if we use it much, it's just going to continue to break. We're going to continue to sink the money into it. And I'm not saying a new piece of equipment can't break. If it's used incorrectly or out maintenance, it will break.
Yeah, we have been using it quite a bit.
So, um, those are things that we need to be thinking about during this budget. So I don't know that your number is, I'm not trying to say your number's low. I think it's, I think we're going to set the bar higher. I don't think we're, we're giving ourselves big enough expectations. And this, that's my personal thing. I, I, I think we should be setting our bar higher. We should be giving ourselves bigger expectations of cycling stuff out. Just because, and, and part of it is, is just like any car, when you trade a car in personally, you don't get the amount of money for the car, for the car you're getting, right? It's just, it's a little bit in comparison to what you're getting. So my suggestion was, would be is, is to bring that up. But, but when you, but when you're coming to council or you're presenting to the public, you need to say, we got four trucks. We're hoping that each one of these trucks will be at an average of two thousand dollars a piece, whatever that may be. We've got a tractor, we're hoping we will bring a thousand dollars in auction. We've got this, we've got this, and, and if this is, you know, eight or ten things, that we're hoping we will get twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm just spitballing, right? Um, but that's what we need to do. In my, in my opinion, that's what we need to do.
Do we need to change that number now, or do we want to come back and look at it?
I think he needs to go back and really look at it. Let's not just look at rolling over, let's actually put some thought into it.
Yeah, and marketplace is, marketplace is a really good place just to jump and, and, you know, you look at what you've got and jump on marketplace real quick, kind of give you an idea. It'll give you a heartbeat of what's going on around you.
Google it right. Renee Bates. Renee Bates is an auction seller.
That won't give you the crap.
If you get the soul pressing.
Probably too old to get Kelly Blue Book or something.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all the cars you could do that, but I'm just saying, if we're going to do an auction, you know, like Renee Bates, that's an auction site, right? You, you might be able to filter back through some old stuff, but I'm saying, the internet, you can Google two thousand ten Ford F-150, or on Marketplace, you can, you can jump on Marketplace and you can query two thousand ten Ford F-150. And it'll kind of give you an idea of what's going on around.
Alright, so there's nothing we can do on that number?
I, I don't, I don't think on that number, but, but, and, and you guys, everybody needs to. JD, our next meet, our next meeting is?
It's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? Can you get us a list by Tuesday with some rough numbers, please? Now, I would say that, go look at what you got there. If, if you went and drove around sewer plant, you play over. Yeah?
Yeah, I was about to say, now that you say that.
See? Because trust me, there's stuff at the sewer plant that ain't there since, since I've gotten involved. You've heard me drive about it. I'll call myself out, it's okay. I was always told, where do I use it? I like a lot of the stuff my, my, plus it'd be about my shop. I don't.
Does anybody have any other questions going down through here? As far as income?
Garbage tax, garbage tax outside, nothing?
Yeah, we got, we got twenty, forty, thirty-four, and forty, thirty-five out the point.
Okay, so garbage tax being calculated differently, it is, so the tax is no longer, it does not have to be on the budget because it's just a liability type of terms and, and so placeholder, it does not have to be a specific line on your flat left. Because it's collected and then we pay it back out.
But this is the, and this is in the revenue side, right? Okay, so even though it evens out, we don't need to, we shouldn't have.
You're not showing it back here.
You're not showing it anywhere on the second page either, okay?
I, I mean, you're going to see it on the second page, but to verify my own work, it should be zeroed out as well.
It is zeroed out, it's on the bottom, non-departmental, twenty-dash-eleven fifty-two ninety-one. Just garbage sales taxes, that the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay? At twenty, forty, forty-one, interest income. That's all rolling into the one?
That's all rolled into the forty-eleven.
So we have the SRA grant still on there? We're still looking, trying to get that?
SRA love or grant, sorry?
Yeah.
I talked to, I talked to Jason while back, and he said that we did not get in, we did not get in on this round.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get it. We're not, we're not set up for next year to get it, so I feel like we should take that off, sort of. I don't see it happening, especially with whatever's going to end up happening down here. You know, I don't, I don't see them getting involved with anybody else at the moment. It would be great, but I don't, I don't see that. Road boards, we don't, we don't think we'll have any road boards.
I mean, I don't foresee any.
You were saying, with all the stuff you got going on.
We just cut across.
You're going to cut across two ten six?
This is income. This is my limited work.
You can charge for it. If somebody comes in and needs something done, you can, you can charge for that.
Yeah, there, there, we do have a fee set for that.
Yeah. I, I, I just, I mean, even, when you think about it, even if it's up and down May's lane, if somebody was to come in and develop some properties up and down May's lane, are you really going to want to, you know, are you really going to want to cut across the road? And then you have to deal with the same thing you just dealt with on Kurt, or that's, that's your highest.
Yeah, I would not be cutting across May's.
And that's your highest traffic road.
I know what.
The only reason why you dug up at the intersection was there was a water rip there, right? You had no choice. But I can't see for a tap reason, you know, I want to really dig up the most highest traffic road in the city, city street. Just, just a thought.
What were you visiting down there?
And just, I, I would think about that, right? You got, there's, there's quite a bit of grass on May's lane. Somebody could come in and something could happen. Next thing you know, people want water or sewer.
So you're going to relook at that one?
Yes. So I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, between twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, how did the sewer billing go down? We did a, uh,
Average billing.
Average billing? Okay. So what, what happened was during the summertime, people watering yards, pools, whatever. Right. Didn't, didn't use sewer water, it was.
They were, they were getting charged sewer, they were getting charged a sewer rate for water they were spilling out on the grass or in a pool.
Okay. And everyone was hard for us to, citizens to understand where it hit them, but I think.
Everybody seems to be happy with it.
Yeah, I think. It's gone down, so you can't, they can't complain about the fact that it's less. Yeah, and we didn't invent, we didn't invent that.
Um, I do want to make mention above, uh, forty-one sixty-eight, calling cards. A little higher than a zeroed out, uh, because we're not having that charge on water bills with our new contract. Take that out, we won't be having that.
Another thing that that did too was gave us better numbers for water and sewer comparison, plus coffee loss.
Water loss?
Water loss.
So we were always screwed up.
Okay.
So we were, we were always screwed up. Um, when it came to looking at the water loss, and that was some of the reasons why, because we were reporting, we were reporting untrue numbers, right? Our sewer numbers were way up here.
It wasn't.
And, yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. Well, you got, we only have one month left, right?
Recalculating it, okay.
I mean, you'll see also another one that was zeroed out because necessarily have to show with our department donations.
We feel like, we feel like our taps are going to be more this next year. I mean, I'm, I'm trying, I don't know of anything hugely coming up. Um, you know, we're not getting any taps out of Wichita, Wichita Bay.
Yeah.
I mean, all that was figured into what they were doing, as far as infrastructure goes. But I mean, if you figure our taps versus what we've done so far, that puts us at fifty-three, six, seven, two, seven, three.
Not in forty-nine, two, so far this year.
Yeah. But if you take that, if you take that and math it out, I mean, that's only about forty-five hundred a month. Of what we've been pulling when we average it. I mean, of course, we know we're not going to tap in the middle. Most people aren't building here in that time, right? So, I mean, if you, I don't know, is it, so does somebody know something that nobody else knows? As far as we're going to exceed what we've done this year, because I feel like we've got a pretty, pretty decent amount of taps this year, because there was quite a bit of building.
We had quite, yeah.
So. I think we're probably going to slow down.
Yeah.
Based, based on the fact that we're doing the land use and the comprehensive plan, and we're putting a few more restrictions on what gets built.
I'm not hearing the noise.
Yeah, I'm not hearing.
So it shows we did in here twenty-four taps, and that's forty, that we've done so far this year. That you, and then sixty would be.
I mean, I'm, I'm not hearing the noise that we would.
Would be about twenty-nine and change in taps, if we did the sixty thousand dollars.
It cost thirty with all even numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, do we think we're going to do more than we did this year in the cap?
No, probably not.
So would you back that number up? Yeah, but that's only going to be, I mean, that, that number is commercial, so the commercial taps are, we're going to get a little bit more.
That was off to a straight residential cap.
Yeah, we're going to get a little bit more, but.
It's not going to make that big a difference, so.
No, no, my, my theory, I just, I want it to be closer to real, because.
And when you guys think, that twenty-four number I had, water and sewer, not all of them have both, but those do.
I mean, we're missing our budget by big time right now. We're at a budget of ninety thousand.
Yeah, that was behind us.
Way off.
So we probably need to take that back down to forty-five? I was about to say that.
That sounds more realistic. That's not a big cut, but it's. And then two, we're going.
I'd about say forty-five.
If they were all residential, that would be twenty-one, twenty-two taps. So forty-five?
I'll just be honest with y'all. You want to, you want to undershoot your income if you can. But if you overshoot that, then you, then you figure all your expenses off of whatever you overshot, and it's going to put you in a high at the end, right? Figure your household expenses on thirty hours, you don't figure on fifty.
Yeah, new land.
What I was taught.
So what's up?
New total revenue for twenty-three, sixty-nine, seven, twenty-five.
Well, there's a couple in there.
There's a couple will go up, but that's where you're at right now.
There's a couple in there that are going to.
So, uh, you want to go on to expenses?
Yeah.
So the salary is based on current numbers?
The, uh, yes. I was thinking like under what time travel to last increase.
So if we're, if we're taking our salary right now, actual, right, where, where actual is three forty-seven and budget five nineteen. Right?
Yes.
So we're, I mean, if we stay on the same pace we're going to stay on right now, which I don't know, I wouldn't. We've pretty much been staffed the same all year. It would end with, with current pay rates at three seventy-nine. So three seventy-nine, five thirty-five, where is there, like, everybody, is everybody getting enormous pay, pay increases?
That number way up.
I mean, you just, I, I'm looking at, at just round numbers, so. And this is just the water, right?
Yeah.
It's just water, that's everybody listed here.
So. That's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And, I mean, there's change after that, but I'm just, I'm looking at the big number of it. I think it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars difference. Now, keep in mind, I, I can see where the thought was, because last year we basically did five nineteen. But I think that was with the thought of maybe bringing on a, a person, another.
This one shows, this one shows bringing on another person, and that might be for your pressure.
So it was our, it's already in here?
Yes, so to potentially bring on another person with their potential rate, it's ours at the very bottom line.
We added somebody too, Russ. We added somebody too.
He's in here.
Yeah, but I mean, that's thirty-nine thousand, right? Probably forty grand. But we're still at a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so where did this number, five thirty-five, two eighty-eight come from?
My math on it, because this report here has got all funds, all employees, so maybe it grabbed them all numbers.
So we, uh, we square with, with what we had agreed with JD on months ago, when he got, when he got his license.
Unless I've left something out, I think it was four hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
It's, it's on there.
JD, you're here, Jay, Justin D?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure I understand these two.
Yeah.
I got five thirty-five, two eighty-eight.
Do you get the one from bottom, thirty-nine, five, five point?
Yeah, I thought so.
I get five twenty, I get five thirty-five too. Well.
That's, we got five thirty-five again.
That's what I got. I mean, we're, we didn't run any length of time that we were under staff this year that I can remember. Well, except for the, we, if, if you think about, we, Mike leaving.
There was a tire lower.
And we didn't replace, because I remember asking JD if he needed somebody. If he wanted to backfill his position when he filled.
If he wanted to backfill his position when he filled the public works director position. So, you basically had one entire salary absorbed.
And mine too, because remember mine was my average work.
We hired somebody in though shortly after that all happened. You hired another guy.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, that didn't take up that entire salary.
No, but...
I'm just saying, so...
And then mine got moved, and we didn't hire somebody in, but a few months later, I did a rate, different salary rate.
The interesting to me is why are we two-hundred, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars under what we asked for last year with only one month left to go?
That's where I'm going, that's what I'm...
Yeah, I mean, I'm adding up this.
That's, that's what I'm saying, and I mean, there's, there's really no more positions that are added except for one, right?
Can we allocate any admin time from, from office staff here into that number?
Into water, sewer?
Yeah. Now, that's only...
So, there, okay, so...
Can we?
I...
No, I'm asking, did, did we?
No, we don't.
No, Tammy and Jeanne are both in here because water, sewer, college, paying or not paying.
Tammy and Jeanne both in.
Okay.
And, and I guess the trade-off of that, the stuff that she would do that's water, sewer related, they also do stuff that may be somewhat related to another department, general fund. So, I mean, there's a fair trade-off, but that line would be so hard to draw.
Now, it can, with Fund V now, we can make some changes. And, and then when we get to the general fund, that's where I'll bring some of that up, but Fund V will split it a lot easier. So, say we have one employee that truly split funds, that we need to bring a portion of them out of general fund and a portion out of water, sewer, it will do that a lot easier without having to do it the way it was done several years ago, where there was several different transfers and line items, so it just made it complicated.
So, Mary, let me ask this question differently. We've spent three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars this year on salaries through eleven months, correct?
No, this number just doesn't have like today's payroll and maybe not last year's payroll, so maybe the past...
It's not gonna have, it's not gonna have any of September, the last week of August and the first week of September. So, if you took three-forty-seven and divided by ten-point-five, you're still gonna get thirty thou, thirty-two or thirty-four thousand dollars. You multiply that number times twelve, which will be the rest of our year, you get to four-seventeen. So, if we're at four-seventeen, why do we need five-thirty-five in twenty-twenty-five? Because if we had, let's say we gave everybody a ten percent rate.
Yeah, which we did, it shows...
That's forty-one thousand, it still only gets us to four-sixty.
Something...
The way I got the five-thirty-five this year...
Yes, there's something wrong with the three-forty-seven number.
Yeah, there's something missing there.
I can look and make sure everything's truly...
I mean, I get the same number, I get the same number you did at the five-thirty-five, adding in those salaries, but what I'm saying is, is that three-forty-seven number cannot be eleven months' worth of salary.
I mean, I just can't do it.
Even if it's ten months.
And, and maybe with... I would, I would have to go back and look at it and see where, if Fund V had it coded somewhere, maybe it'd be August through October, December, August through December, which we did that all salary through very quick books, maybe that's not showing that line, that's the only thing I could possibly think of, but... What, I mean, everything's been going smoothly through there. With the five-thirty-five number, I didn't get from any trends, it was straight from this at everybody forty-hour weeks, this is what they're...
Yeah, we'll need to go back and look and see what's missing there.
I get that, I get this number, how you got there. What I wanna know is why the number that's this year, we're so much different, I mean, I mean, we're thirty-three percent under budget in salary, and that seems like that would be one of the easiest numbers to come up with because we know what everybody gets paid. If anything, trying to figure out overtime would be the problem.
Another split when it comes to salary and overtime, because I code those separately. I'll go back and look, and when I can look into the system.
But that, on, and on, and on JD's piece, as Ramsey mentioned a minute ago, when we met with, when we met with him meeting our requirements, we agreed to give him seventy-two thousand. That's what we agreed to do when we met with him in executive session.
I'm just gonna tell you from a business standpoint, I think that, that's absurd if you look at, and it's all public record, you're gonna have citizens come in here and they're gonna throw a fit. If you look at this, you have somebody that's been here for three years at this city, right? And we're projecting giving them fifteen dollars in three years. A little over, actually.
Yeah, but that's, that's based on a promotion, not based on...
And, but, and, and what I'm saying is what constitutes that? I wasn't at that meeting, I was, I worked at that, I hired them. So, what constitutes that? Where, where is our justification to our citizens for spending the money that, in that way? So, when we met at executive session, and I believe you worked, we, we can't talk about that.
Okay.
I was, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay.
The night, the night that y'all talked about that, correct? I wasn't there, unfortunately. I think I called Mary and Chris both and said that. But what, what I'm getting at is, is I think we need to make sure that, I mean, if you look at this, if you, if you look, if you look at the trends here, you need to be careful in, in making our decisions because we could start it all off. Whether it be, I mean, whether it be with employees, whether it be with whoever. You know, because right now, we're still even computing for, for one employee, we got twenty-one point one-five, everybody else is somewhere around the five percent range, which is, which is pretty standard and fair.
Right.
But, but what, let's get back to what we're saying, and, and again, I wasn't part of that conversation, but what, I'm asking for knowledge, what constitutes us saying we're gonna go from here to there? What requirements?
So, I would take job promotion.
Okay.
That's where I believe that, that the difference would be built in. Because the, the public works director is different than a, a, a non-leadership position. I mean, wouldn't you, wouldn't you say that the public works director, if we had a public works director, Mike Stafford, he made a certain amount of money?
Yeah, I think his salary was, he had, he was on salary, he wasn't hourly. His salary was sixty-five thousand?
I thought it was seventy-two is what I saw. I don't remember exactly.
It was a thirty-two, an outlook, that salary, when I'm...
For some reason, I was thinking we, we had, we got information that we...
Yeah, that would tell us.
Tell us that, but, okay, sixty-seven thousand, I'm sorry.
I'm about to say it's sixty-eight.
So, sixty-seven, six-hundred. So, I was thinking somewhere around sixty-five, and, and so I was, I'm asking is for us to make the decision as council, we need to make sure we have the reason as to why, because you're gonna, we'll get asked.
Sure.
We all get asked questions. And so, the reason as to, I understand promotion, but if you, if you were a citizen, you were asking, that's not gonna be good enough answer, right?
Was it, was it the number seventy-two, or was it to move it to the same that Mike...
Move it to the same as Mike.
Okay, so there's a, there's a difference.
So, I misunderstood that, true.
So, and, and I would ask as a citizen, right? If I was a citizen, I would ask what was the reason for that? Because it was the same position or...
I would say yes, because if we asked, we specifically, it was holding the same certification.
It's, but he's not holding the same certification as Stafford was.
I just gotta get, get a C sewer.
That's why...
I'm just saying, okay, but I'm, but, and that's how our city always pays people. It's actually in our, what, handbook? That when, when somebody gets a license, they get a bump, and, and it's written in the handbook is certain bump, and I can't remember all that. But there is stuff in our handbook that tells people that when you get a license, you'll get a fifty, let's say fifty cent bump, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So, but, but, but again, that's, that's, that's another thing to think about is, yes, if the credentials were the same, I understand that, we need to, we need to have those answers for citizens.
Okay.
So, I mean, at, at the moment, at the moment, you're sitting at twenty, it's twenty-six hourly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And what we're proposing is thirty-one fifty. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Say it again?
What's being proposed is thirty-one fifty, which is...
When he got his license, his second license.
So, we're at thirty-one fifty now, or we're at twenty-six?
No, we're at twenty-six.
You get overdone?
Sometimes, not much.
Your salary, and you get overtime?
I'm not salary.
That was never, I mean, that was something that was done with Mike Stafford.
I'm not really.
I don't know if that's something you guys don't look at doing, what you want to do. Anyway, I think it's something for us to make sure we're careful of thinking about because we need everybody to ask where you get this, right? And there's people that are...
Sure.
That are hearing it tonight, but, I mean, I'm just looking at, and I get it, there's, there's promotions, right? And, and that's easy to answer that, but... I don't know.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're following what we agreed to.
Yeah. I'm only bringing it up because if somebody asks you about these numbers, be prepared to answer them. That's all, that's all I'm, when I seen the percentages, I'm like, oh, man. So, there's, there's, and, and, and it's, a lot of it's easy to answer when you say promotion. It's, it's easy to make promotion from field supervisor to public works director.
Sure.
So, then it must have been thirty-one fifty, not thirty-one, I guess, that's why you got this.
More, more, think about it a little less.
Some reason sixty-five thousand was in my, which was, I think, was paying Stafford. And I should start saying the previous one. Other than that, I think, I mean, and I'm not saying that that makes this a bad job, I'm just saying, other than that, I think I did a really clean job of, of keeping the percentages. Do we have anybody that's gonna, that's, that's, we have anybody that's gonna get licenses this year?
Yes, and that's, that's why, so I kept the extra, the new hire, because it was approved last budget. So, I kept it on there because once they do get their sewer license, they're gonna be operator.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
And it's gonna take one out of the field.
Now, you've only got five percent on most everybody across the board, it's, that's about where it's at, and that, that's not, that's, that's a good, a good trend to have. But, I mean, we should at least have an idea of who is going to...
I do.
...get their license, and I think that needs to go ahead and be added to their projected possible salary. I'm just, I mean, it only makes sense if we know our crews, we know our people, we know what we're gonna do, we need to have that, I'm not saying, if they don't, if they don't hit the milestone, it just doesn't go to them, right? But, but you need to, you need to make sure you've allocated for that, it would be, it would be just like, would be just like if, if it was a plan for us to promote you to public works director, you currently, if you weren't there, we'd need to make sure we planned for that.
That, that, there's one individual that got paid as a license operator.
Okay.
So, he's already there. That's why I didn't add any more to them.
As long as they know that.
Yeah, they know.
As long as they know that, that's fine, but I would hope you've got more than one person that's gonna...
I do.
...end up with license this year.
I do.
And I just didn't see any of the raises that were indicative of that.
Yeah.
I mean, all your raises were just a pretty standard rate, but fair, but standard.
Yeah, but they have to start, they have to start at D. You don't get a, you don't get a major raise for a D.
I get it, but these were all just cost of living raises is what I'm seeing.
Oh, okay.
Would it be easier to go back?
I mean, cost of living is anywhere from three to five percent, we all agree to that?
Yeah.
That's, that's typically a, a cost of living raise, and that's what I'm seeing that everybody was given here, and I think that's fair, I think the city's doing good by our employees, but if you have somebody that's gonna get a license, then there should be a little bit more showing there for that person that we're planning to make sure they get a license this year. I agree. And, and I'm asking that please ask, make sure we get people licensed this year. I would love to see everybody in our public works department hold some sort of a license, whether it's just a, you know, a basic D distribution or whatever it is, right? Be good for you and good for the city.
I'm like that.
And it'd be good for them, and get some a little bit more money.
Well, anybody that's out in the field should have a D anyway, at least a D distribution.
Well, you're supposed to, after a budget.
We can update that, look at that again on Tuesday? Do you wanna, you want this to be updated and look at it again on Tuesday with those other essentials?
I, I, y'all see what I'm...
We need an actual, some kind of a better number to go off.
I mean, if we've got, if we've got four out of the, how many ever employees you have in the field that you feel darn sure they're gonna get a D or, or whatever, make that show here. Because that's, that wouldn't be five percent, it'd probably equal maybe ten percent, right?
No, not quite that, that's all I think.
No, not quite.
Probably about eight.
It, yeah, it's about two and a half percent of this one that I'm looking at. If we add, it's fifty, isn't it?
Yeah.
Fifty for every license you get or something.
I think that was, I don't know that it's still written in the policy manual, they might, I think that was final label.
Anyway, you get it.
And that may have just been done by the previous public worker.
Make sure you plan, make...
It never came to us to change that.
No, I don't remember it being changed, and I've got it somewhere electronically, but just make sure you, you plan to, to do for the people what we said we're gonna do for the people. And what they, what they agreed to work for us, for the city for. Yeah, that's only that. And now, I mean, I guess that's the question since we're looking at salaries, are we gonna look at, are we gonna look at public works staying hourly, or is that something that y'all are looking at wanting to be salary?
I think that position needs to be, just like the chiefs, just like Mary's, I think that position needs to be salary. I don't know what kind of overtime you're putting in, but I think it needs to be. What are y'all's thoughts?
I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, I was sitting in a chair whenever that came about, I mean, I agree, it just, it made sense.
That's what Mike had, told her.
Yeah, the previous public works director had that, and I mean, that's what we did after, you know, Kim.
It was right at Kim.
I'm gonna say Kim's name, whether, that's...
Yeah.
It was at that time when she got fired.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it made more sense. It just made more sense. It was a lot easier to keep up with, it was a lot less hassle. Figured out what's... But anyway.
Is that something council asked to do?
Yeah, that, that would have to be a decision that would have to be made, but, I mean, I, I'm only asking because how this would, this would look because... This doesn't have...
You're writing it in front of Jim Dad.
This doesn't have anything figured as far as overtime, right?
Uh, overtime is on the bottom.
It is, yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying in these figures...
These figures do not show overtime, these are straight forty hours.
We only have nineteen thousand in overtime this year. Seems low to me. I, I'm... Just concerned this column under twenty-four, twenty-five actual is...
Not accurate again.
Accurate or not accurate.
I know, there's been a lot of...
I mean, we're really five-hundred thousand dollars under budget.
So, now, is that nineteen thousand?
You're asking about overtime, I was on overtime, I missed something.
I was, yeah, no, I'm just, how accurate that is because I'm looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five number.
There was, yes.
There's a budget there.
Yep.
A million four, and there's an actual of nine-eighty, and that means we're... A million four, and there's an actual of nine eighty, and that means we're... Five hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm going to say salary is, I'm almost one hundred percent positive that it's accurate. They, they reduced quite a bit on it.
That wouldn't mean we're that, that far under, but that doesn't...
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what it means. I'm pretty sure that budget versus actual.
Your actual, your budget number is not, does not mean what you income, that doesn't mean that's what you brought in.
I understand.
No, I, no, I, we understand.
I understand the difference between budget and revenue, I'm saying that the number we budgeted versus the number we spent is five hundred thousand dollars difference. And I can't believe we're either that bad at math on the budget side, or we're, that this number, is that correct?
I think we still have some stuff we can categorize wrong.
I, I, that's, that's what I believe.
There may, well, the categorized wrong doesn't have anything to do with total, but you're gonna be...
It would if some of it's not making it into the right fund.
Well, water sewer is, water sewer.
It's all gonna be in the right one.
I don't see that you...
It's not gonna be a different line item.
Yeah, it's gonna be a water sewer, you're not gonna have anything here that's gonna be hit in general fund because, quite honestly, it's been hit very, very many times, or...
I mean, there might be a few things on in the right line item, just because last year when the budget came to me, it was already pretty well done, and that was said, hey, do this, and fix the numbers that you gotta fix.
I think what I'm gonna say, I mean, even your ten thousand dollars selling vehicles, right there's ten grand. You do that very many times, I have to point that. So I think, I think that, yeah, our budgeted number versus we missed the mark on several things, what, ninety thousand for your tax, and you're not even gonna make it to sixty thousand, so I just brought you forty thousand up there. Right, real, I mean, that's just in my memory of what we've been wondering, so there's been a lot of times where we guess we didn't hit the mark.
It tells you something's way up, go down there to insurance. We only paid a...
That one, that one maybe is one that has to be looked at a little deeper.
Twenty oh six fifty nineteen.
What number did you say?
How about?
Twenty oh six fifty nineteen, employee insurance. Budgeted one sixty-two forty-eight, four ninety-eight, and have only spent a hundred and four dollars.
But we, but we're asking, so I guess what we need to, what we need to do is, we need to start going down through these, we're not gonna think any further.
Yeah.
So we're at salary, you guys are gonna look at that and come back, right?
Insurance, look at that.
Yes.
So, the employee tax, I mean, that's pretty, pretty darn close to the same.
Workers' comp, is, is that the cost of workers' comp, not workers' comp payouts, right? And we've missed that by nine thousand, but...
We did have, we did have a claim this year, right?
Yeah, but that's not where that's gonna come from.
Postage, we missed by ten thousand dollars.
Postage is, is gonna be different because of fund view and the way it was calculated, that we actually pay postage versus it was coming out of billing last year.
We still need to back up and make sure we're, you're gonna look at that workman's comp.
Yes, I will.
And the insurance.
Coming out properly, yes.
Workman's comp, that's a hundred...
Yeah.
Sixty-two thousand dollars, I think, pretty quick.
Yeah.
Hundred sixty-two thirty.
Yeah. Doesn't take long.
Three fifty-four, I guess, we'd have. That's a lot of money to add up down there.
With property insurance, general liability, both of those have zero in the expense column this year?
Yes, they're not meant to be, that, those are, those are some of those I've gotta go back and work, they've been paid, because I just need to make sure they're coded properly.
How many trucks do we have running up and down the road?
Four of them need to be replaced? Yeah, just a simple point, just, and four, and four of the six need to be replaced.
Two thousand six, two thousand nine?
I trust you, I'm just saying, we, we, seems like we need to stagger these a little better over, like, every two years, replace two trucks, instead of replace four of six in one year.
So uniforms, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, the idea is, what I was hoping that we would start shooting for, but things just started going sideways and backwards, that we would every, every year be turning over like two trucks. That was the idea, and every year they would be turning over one police vehicle. That would, that would, you, you, you kinda keep your fleet rotating constant.
Keep it fresh.
Which we could probably start doing that maybe next year with the two that he's talking about not selling this year, and we could start, start that rotation process maybe next year. That's just a thought.
We talked about, or we had the thought of, of, what was that, enterprise?
We don't, it would not be a business.
Okay.
We, we looked at it, it would, it would.
Okay.
So TMRS?
Actually being coded properly, in, in previous years it wasn't coded properly, now it's actually coming out where it should. I don't even think last year, I mean, it had it in here, but it, the way it was coding, this one is an automatic code. As we pay, it automatically comes off.
So there's nothing, there's...
So that one, oh, I guess that one didn't bring in my numbers.
Yeah, there's nothing showing to be budgeted there.
Okay, then for some reason...
The postage machine lease, I'm sure we're still gonna have to lease that thing, right?
Yes. I believe that one's been coming out of just postage and general.
Here's another example of a number that doesn't add a FICA, being thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars is what we budgeted for it, which we should know our FICA cost for twelve months.
Yes.
Right, and we've spent twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars in eleven months, so that's thirty-six hundred a month, not the twelve thousand dollar difference. Right, okay? That's another one to look up and say, why is this number under valued in the, in the current column?
We've gotta have fuel hitting something else.
Yes.
That's just equipment fuel.
We're still gonna have fuel hitting something else.
So...
I would think. I don't know, I don't know.
Equipment fuel?
Yeah, I mean, as much as we drive that Vaco all over town...
So it's probably tied into a little bit with the vehicle fuel.
Something, so, something's gotta be. I mean, really, when you think about even the lawnmowers, that's equipment.
Yeah, and, and when they get, when they get gas, if they have to go to the store for a lawnmower.
Uh, but the lawnmower stuff's gonna come out when it's open.
What's, what's the increase on the contract level?
We, we got a little lower than just park, we got a...
I was waiting to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, skipped it.
We got a wastewater plant and a water plant that should be getting moved to.
Yeah, like, why are, why are we contract now?
So that's our, uh, that's Dustin, that's our, um, water plant operator, the operator.
That's our licensed operator.
Yeah, right now, we can't do hardly much at the workman's comp. They got so much equipment out there.
Use their equipment.
No, it's nothing we could use.
Oh, I know, my...
Besides that SkyTrak.
I don't use their equipment.
I can use that SkyTrak for a lot of things.
So he went up ten thousand, no?
No, we only got a part here. He came in and parked it.
Well, the idea would be for us at some point to get our own license.
Yeah. That'll be my next one after this, sure.
Where will we at? Yeah, we have equipment fuel, man.
I'll, I'll look and see what all's coming in there.
Something's gotta be hit, it, we gotta be hitting something else with that cost. That just doesn't seem like enough.
Well, we only have two vendors for equipment fuel, so I'll just look both of those, see where they're hitting.
For the most part, our equipment fuel comes from our tanks.
That's, yeah, I think that's what that is.
I mean, I would almost be willing to bet you, you spend a thousand dollars on lawnmower gas.
Yeah.
And that's coming out of your, that's coming out of your truck fuel, your, your vehicle fuel. That's not, I mean, we gotta figure out a way to track that, that's where I was talking at one point, I was getting debit cards for the bank that just went for fuel.
But I think too, that when they go to the lawn, get the lawnmower gas at the store, they just turn in their receipt, it says Phillies.
Yeah, it, it gets tracked, it shows, um, with Phillies, we get a scan, piece of paper of every single, if they wrote gas can on them, then we separate that into equipment fuel.
That's the, that's the kicker, if they wrote gas.
Well, aren't they, why aren't they putting what can, what unit, what...
They do, but it's just, when she gets all of those, I need to make sure, see where those are coming from, because they were coming from whenever I was doing this, that would come out of equipment fuel and water sewer. Some of it I would do, I would try to split some of it up, some of it would be the part equipment fuel too, because you got the general fund equipment fuel line as well.
I thought we rented a pump this year. Yeah, it was this year, around four in the last public works director.
I don't think that was on, what's that this year?
I'm pretty sure.
Big one, that's six inch.
I'm pretty sure it was, it was shortly after the budget turned over. Right, around January-ish, if I remember correctly.
I think you're right, maybe.
I mean, we didn't, we don't have anything showing for equipment, equipment rental. We haven't rented anything else?
Reller.
We did?
Yeah, before we bought ours.
No, this year, this year.
No, this year.
Not this year, that was before, but...
No, we didn't rent anything else. Which now, now that you say that, I should put something back in there, in case we have to, because we have...
You've got, you've got three thousand for equipment rental.
Yeah. I mean, a little more than that, because I think that pump was pretty expensive.
We don't know, because it's not on there.
But we may have to do that, yeah.
I mean, if we do it this, if we do it again, let's please make sure we do it for a good reason and just do it. If we just pumped the thing down and never done the work, that was wasted. Really wasted, yeah, wasted money. But, yeah, I mean, we, we could, that pump was way over here. You'd probably get away with one half that size.
The next line I wanna explain.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if I've got to it yet, but it should, it should bring a little red flag, not a red flag, it should bring a flag. Okay, so, uh, when we got the CDPG grant, the original match was twenty-five thousand. It did go up to, I think, and added almost six thousand with the differences in material that we had when we approved the final contracts, when the addendum said increase that. They, the contractors are allowed to do change orders up to twenty-five percent of the project, so when I spoke with Chrissy today, I said, give me the maximum amount that they could possibly do a change order for on all contracts, or what would be our maximum city expense for that grant, and that's the number she gave me, was one twenty-four. She said, does she see that happening? No, but she wanted to play it safe, let it be there. So that's why that number is so high, but that is for the CDPG grant that we have going on. We already have some change orders coming in.
Do we want to gamble on the fact that it's gonna be a hundred percent? I mean, if she's saying she doesn't see it, you know, or do we wanna say, let's at least figure for...
I think that's the most conservative, but...
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, that, that's why I put that there to give that maximum number.
Well, there's no gamble here, there's no, there's no gamble with that.
Yeah.
But I guess that'd be the place that we have to ask, because, and maybe, once, once this number starts getting crunched, and that could be one of our places we all need to remember that we might go back to. And say, look, this was just...
Start there in a minute.
This was just a, this was a guess, right?
Yeah, you, you just gotta figure with, with the increases and the inflation that have been since probably, since these simple bid estimated, I wouldn't be surprised at all.
Well, that one went pretty quick, and, and the thing is, with a lot of these, a lot of materials, these materials got bought, right, as soon as the contracts got won. So the, the material pricing was, was checked at our bid meeting, or whatever, kickoff, whatever the meeting was. So all that was, was kinda brought to light then, so there was a little bit of change right then on, on pricing, because I think there was some valve or something like that, but, but, uh, all I was saying was, when we have to start looking for money, I would say this would be one of the places that we would look first, because this is just a, this is a worst-case scenario estimate. And, and, you know, yeah, plan for the worst, hope for the best, I get that, but if, if we have to take something, my thoughts, I'm...
And that's why I put that max number in there, so it, it...
Yeah.
Shows you guys what that number would be.
In reality, we could probably get, we could probably be safe with fifty percent at that, because if, if we're a hundred percent, everybody is a hundred percent, we got more problems.
She said, she said it was looking at twenty-nine, I believe it was around twenty-nine thousand is what, is at the moment, will be the city's funds that will be used.
Yeah, this is what I mean, so all of them may go ahead.
From it.
Go ahead, go ahead, maximum amount.
But, change of apartment will advocate for us and...
They put it, they put it in.
I'm just saying, there you go, with the curse and everything. Twenty zero six fifty-one eleven, Christmas bonuses? We're off somewhere there.
I mentioned that before you added your person.
What's that?
So I might have done that before, but if you added a new person.
Well, now, we, but, we, I'm saying, we budgeted seven thousand.
Yeah, so that is one I'm having, I'm having fund view, we'll look at and...
Still gotta come out, I don't know.
Yeah.
But why is there something showing?
No, it's already came out, I, I already have a, a ticket working with fund view to check why the coding didn't go on that one.
How do we know so badly on the telephone? Sixteen fifty and five thousand dollars?
Because the way it was, the budget was handed to me last year, um, this is gonna be a more accurate number, that's gonna be all of our cell phones. We have telephone in there, we have internet, we've got all these things that, several different lineups that all are kinda coming out at the same, that is gonna be all of our cell phones.
Bank card.
Bank card fees are new, um, newly put into this line item, so, um, as they pay their water bills and they're paying that percentage, that, that's where that's coming from, we pay that once a month now.
So shouldn't that be offset by the, by the person paying their water bill?
Not how we set them up, we pay it. Now, they pay it, but we still have to pay a portion back to the credit card processor.
Right, so we charge, we charge a three percent, what, we charge something on top of?
Yes.
So it's included in the water bill?
Yes.
Like, I paid it a hundred dollars, so instead of my pay by credit cards, a hundred and three.
Yes.
Gotcha, but, and I understand we pay a percentage back to the, so those, those should cancel each other out.
It should, yes.
So it shouldn't be a six thousand, one hundred, it shouldn't be a sixty-two hundred dollar cost on the budget.
Oh, my question is, if it's sixty-one hundred now, sixty-two hundred now, why are we on a budget two hundred again?
That's a good, good question.
That's what my question, yeah.
That's, yes, so the sixty-one, we could cancel that out and not let it show on the budget, but I've got the way, I'll have to make sure I pull it out of the income.
Well, I, I don't know that you cancel it out, you have to show it in both places, right? It doesn't matter if there's an income and out.
Right.
That's fine, then it shows that, you wanna show it, you wanna show all your transactions, because you have the transparency and it's easy to track.
Kind of like where you did the tax lines earlier, but I mean, cancel each other out?
Yeah, if it's gonna be sixty-one ninety-four, or it's already sixty-one ninety-four, so it's probably gonna end up being, I don't know, seventy-five hundred, I, I didn't do no math on it, but, I, I mean, it doesn't need to be two hundred.
No, yeah, and then it shouldn't have been too much on there.
So, so the income, the income side of that has gone up proportionally? If, if, if this is include, if this, if these fees are included or paid, they're collected on the income side and paid out here.
Right.
The income side has been proportionally increased over the...
Yes.
Okay, under the what, so it would be under the water, water income?
On the exact, not, the exact forty, it's gonna, it's gonna be under the water, the forty-two ten.
Forty-two ten, right.
It's gonna, yeah, it's all inclusive, it's not...
Yes, so when the money comes in, it doesn't come in as a separate transaction, it's all coming in one lump sum, and then, once a month, they... Yes, so when the money comes in, it doesn't come in as a separate transaction, it's all coming in one month sum, and then once a month, they take their portion.
Yeah, they bill us for it.
We'll back, back up for a second to phones. Came up and it kind of just passed through.
Is that cell phones or?
Nope, there's two different lines. You got cell phones and you got phones.
Under cell phones, you only have sixty dollars spent this year.
That five thousand is all, and that's gonna include all cell phones.
That's wild.
And that's gonna, uh.
But you got telephone, six thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, that is cell phones.
Then you have cell phones further down.
Yeah, cell phones at sixty dollars. There's only been sixty dollars as the actual.
And it has nothing budgeted for in twenty.
Yes.
Five, twenty-six.
Which you adjust the budget as to what the cell phone will be, and I'll get that calculated number proper.
Which makes sense, because you have five thousand dollars budgeted for it in twenty-four, twenty-five, and sixty dollars spent against it. And then in the other telephone line, you have sixteen fifty and you have five thousand spent against it.
I'll go through and I will verify that there. Um, and do we want to consolidate those lines, make all the phones in one line, instead of having cell phone and cell phones?
Makes sense to me that you have.
It makes, it makes great sense to me.
Yeah. I would, I would say combine both of those, but.
Okay.
There are other people that.
I'm good with that, just so we can get an actual number.
Yeah.
Would you say we're current on, on, like, all of our vendor, uh, account tables right now?
We're current?
Yeah. You said real current. I'm, I'm asking, it's like, the, the, the big one, your chemicals, right? Um, our chemicals is a big one, and, and I.
Uh, yes.
I'm wondering if we need to figure that one on ten months rather than eleven months, right?
Uh, now, we get those at the end of, so we usually get that, we don't, that, that bill comes later on chemicals. They're, they're one of our slower ones.
So do we only, we only paid eight months right now, you would think?
That's what I'm thinking, is these numbers aren't actually eleven months.
Well, and they never are, and they never are. They never are, right?
Right.
I mean, they, they really never are, but, um. I, the reason why I'm at, I, I, I don't know if a hundred and ten thousand's enough. If we're, if, we gotta think about, there's gonna be, there's gonna be rate increases, they're gonna increase their rates on their chemicals. I'm sure we know that. I don't know if we found that out or not, or asked them, but. I don't know, if you look at a hundred and one thousand. I, I, my, what I, what my point was, Mary, is, is are we actually paid for eleven months, you think, or are we paid for ten months at the moment?
I, I don't, it won't be eleven months.
That's what I was.
It, it won't be.
Your math, the math is, is showing you would be eleven months.
Yes.
To divide your, your current actual, so I think we're off on that number by probably ten thousand or more.
That needs increase.
Yeah, I think your, your chemicals, just on your, just on your, just on your trend, that's without any increase in, in chemical pricing. So, I mean, I, I, I think that number needs to look more like a hundred and thirty thousand. To, to give you a.
Gonna be closer to accurate.
To give you a buffer of, of, uh, increase on the service or the chemical that we, that we're having purchased.
That's just last year, and I don't remember. We're on a cash basis for what we're looking at here, right?
Yes.
There's checks written, checks actually written.
Yes.
Not bill, not bills that have come in.
Correct.
If we're on, if we're looking at that on accrual.
We still know how, you know, we still know how many months this actually includes.
Yeah, yeah. But if we're looking at it on accrual basis and the bills had all been entered in.
Yeah.
We'd answer that. We'd have the answer to that question.
Well, I, I think the account payable's staying pretty darn current. She's staying on top of that pretty well.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, unless, unless check written against it, that bill comes in, if we saw it on an accrual basis, we would have.
And I believe these actuals came, they were pulled on the twenty-sixth of August. So nothing from the first week of September, obviously, that we had a ton of bills coming in, that's, that's.
If, if I remember right, we were on a, I think we're on a thirty with them, with our chemical.
Yeah.
Uh, vendors, so. And that thirty with them, so I mean, yeah, I would say we're ten months.
Ten to ten and a half.
So I, I would definitely think we should put that like on thirty. You guys agree?
I do. I mean, in, in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was one sixteen.
Right, yeah, I mean. Definitely not.
It does look like it's trending down, though. Is there a reach, could that, could that be true?
Well, our SCADA's probably helped some.
Yes.
The SCADA's, the SCADA's helped some on our, so our process, the process.
And we found that there was some chemicals order that we've had to sit around, so we defined that process a little more.
Process management has helped quite a bit. That SCADA system has, has, has helped come in, and I know we did, we got some new scales, right? P D.
Yeah.
Um, so that probably helped us with our chlorine measuring.
That helped a ton. The old ones were completely shut.
Our old scales were jacked up, so, yeah, I mean, there, there's the process and procedure that's helped a lot. I just, I know that, the chemical one, I know this one is, it's bit us in the butt near every year, it seems like. It seems like we've never been able to hit that mark.
Yeah, yeah. We've had pretty good times missing the last two years.
We have a big time miss.
We did, eighty-five.
Yeah, we got, we got.
Yeah, but we, we put it at sixty last year, because we was told it was gonna go down with the new SCADA system and all that.
So we're gonna come back on audit. Is that, we're about where we're at, guys?
Yes, sir.
Audit, where we need to come back and start?
Okay. I'll give you guys, um, I'll go through all the ones that highlighted, uh, questions.
So twenty oh six fifty-two fifty-seven, so we'll start back up.
And that will be on, we will have a thirty-minute block on our regular session for that, um, and then we'll start with media and fixing. Rolling into general fund.
Yeah. Hopefully, we can knock this one out on the next meeting.
Also, I'll get, um, not gonna get myself up that one, and try to get new actuals, more up-to-date actuals.
Back motion.
Second. Ted, you go.
I like that. Thank you, guys.